I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, first thing, approve the agenda. Anyone have any changes, additions to the agenda? Not? For motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Pat Scripture. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we had a budget workshop before the meeting and went over more in detail the 2013 audit. And so, right now, we're going to get a summary of the audit report from Kyle with our auditing firm. So Kyle, your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kyle Myers from Abdurrahman Myers. And just in summary of some of the things I went over in the workshop session, our opinion on the city's financial statement is a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, which is found on pages 11 through 13 of the audit report. Some of the other highlights I went over during the presentation is that the general fund has a 40 percent plus fund balance of next year's budget, which is above the city's policy recommendation of 40 percent. In addition to that 40 percent, the city has assigned approximately $2.1 million for future capital needs within the city and capital projects. When I went over the debt service funds, there was certain debt service issues whose debt had been paid off, and the city is going to follow up on those funds to see if those can be transferred and closed to other funds. And then also analyze any existing bond issues where the sufficient funds are available to possibly call bonds early, too. So there was, I think, one mentioned in that analysis. Overall, the capital projects funds of the city have good reserves and balances set aside for future capital needs. The governmental funds, and then with the enterprise fund operations and cash flows, pretty much for the most part, the enterprise funds are doing as intended. They're having good, healthy cash flows and you're increasing your cash balances to fund future capital needs. You're paying for your current operations, for the most part, and your debt service payments out of your rates. So, but just like we said, continually to review those rates every year, annually, to see that you have sufficient rate charges for services to pay your operating costs and debt service funds, or debt service costs.
That's about all I have. Is there anything else that...anybody have any questions on anything?
Now, Mike, you had a statement at the end of the workshop that we made it wait till Kyle. So, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask him if he could provide as a summary of all that that he just went through, what was his overall general assessment for the layperson to understand?
What?
We got the true accounting recommendations, but now for the layperson that's watching, what can they expect?
What does it mean?
Oh.
Yeah, your opinion.
Oh, I thought you said I...okay. No, I guess overall, the city has good balances, good...you know, a lot of times, you're analyzing your enterprise funds on annual basis, as evidenced by the rate increases that were implemented during the year, to, you know, you've got a lot of debt out there in the sewer funds. So, you know, a lot of that was just, you know, done because of management looking at the financial picture and making changes as deemed necessary. So I think you've got good staff here that recognize the needs of the city and are taking action to adequately fund the operations.
Okay. Any other questions?
We'd also be remiss in not thanking Patty and her staff, Leah and the staff in the finance department for all the hard work that they put into doing this. This is not an easy endeavor to undertake, as the mayor well knows, because he's a CPA. But we do appreciate the county work that the staff does in this area.
Good. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Kyle. Any other questions for Kyle? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing with us the highlights, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
We look forward to another year.
Okay.
Go ahead, Patty. You can leave. Patty and Bruce are leaving the meeting as of right now. They thought they were going to get away with it clean, didn't they? Okay, next on the agenda, the review of the incentive program with GME now that the audit is done for year 2013. You going to take that, Mike?
Sure. As you take a look at the consultant agreement that we have with Gulf Management Enterprise LLC, we're required to examine and evaluate whether any year-end financial incentive is due and owed to GME. In accordance with the exhibit in their agreement, there's a two-pronged calculation that goes into that process. First factor requires year-end operating revenues to exceed the prior year's operating revenue. And secondly, the second factor requires year-end operating income after adding back depreciation to be positive. Unfortunately, due to the weather we had a little bit in 2013, neither one of those targets were hit. And in simple terms, they did not meet the two factors. And as such, there is no recommendation to award any incentive payment for 2013. Doesn't mean that it was a bad year, but it just didn't materially result in them meeting the standards. Overall, operating revenues were down from 686 down to 640 in 2013. If you take a look at operating expenditures, adding back depreciation, we ended up being negative by about $18,000 this year, whereas the last two years, we were positive at $41,000 a year. So this is the first year of the three years under this contract that it was not positive. So, although we've made some good improvements, this last year was a testament that Mother Nature does have an impact. And it's imperative that we take a look at where we're going with revenues and cost containment, as well as new debt, to manage this overall operation. It's not out of the woods yet, but we've made improvements in a positive direction, but still have some long-term work that needs to be done.
And has GME been notified?
Yes.
Okay.
They were sent the same information you would...you received here. And so I just need your action to confirm this under the contractual arrangement we have with them.
Anyone have any questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to concur with the findings on the incentive program.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Passes 5-0. Next, Glenn, are you taking this one?
I am. We received three quotes for seal coating again this year. Three companies are the same companies that have quoted with us for the last about nine years that I can remember. Pearson Brothers are the cheapest one, $1.38 a square yard. Falls right into what our plan was, pretty much. We were estimating $1.30, and they came in higher than what they told us to expect. So, happens once in a while. In fact, there's a graph or line chart that's attached to all this. Kind of shows just the increases that we've had through the years, or the cost of seal coating per square yard. It's all pretty much related to the price of gas or oil, because the asphalt product, which is called a CRS 2P, is...it's all pretty much oil-based. So, if oil prices are up, then the cost of seal coating is going to go up. But anyway, with the $150,000 that Public Works had budgeted, and then $9,400 that Parks Department had budgeted for the seal coating of the parking lots in the different parks around town, plus we also had that money from the Village Street Association, gets us to recommending that we hire Pearson Brothers at $1.38 per square yard. We'd be doing 117,607 square yards, and we'd be right into budget, including traffic paint for doing striping in the parking lots, Memorial Park, handicap signs, things like that.
Any questions?
When are you going to start the seal coating?
Seal coating usually happens in June. We won't let them go before May 15. The other stipulation we have on it is we want to get done with crack sealing before we allow them to deal...do seal coating. So, we have crack sealing scheduled for the third week of May. And again, that's real typical for us. Mother Nature's a key player in this whole operation. So if she cooperates, then we'll stay on track, be around schedule. But that just screws up everybody. So, but that is the plan. It usually works out. It's probably about the middle of June. We notify the homeowners that are all affected. A week previous to this, we leave a flyer on their door, or knock on the door. The contractor also sets out signs along the street saying that there should be no parking in the next 24 hours because of this. You know, and we get some people that call City Hall once in a while. But usually, it seems like most of these people have kind of lived through it, and they know that it really is not a big effect on them. There's about 15 minutes they can't drive the road. So if you happened to have wanted to leave right at that split second, you'd probably end up waiting 10 or 15 minutes before they put the rock down. So, it's worked out pretty good in past years.
Okay.
Glenn, is this a lot more than you normally do?
It is a little bit more, yes, yes. Not a lot more, though. In fact, we've had a couple of years that we were actually right at this 117. We had one year, I think it was 2009, something like that, we had 120,000 square yards. It all...we're trying to kind of even it out a little bit more, and we're getting closer at that. There was a number of years that we had 60,000, 70,000 square yards, and then all of a sudden, 120,000. And it's all because of that...how much was done that year. So five years later, we're doing that much again. We're trying to kind of even that out a little bit. It's working out. We're getting closer. We should eventually get to the point where every year, it's going to be about the same square yards.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the bid by Pearson Brothers at $1.38 per square yard.
Still moved.
Second.
A motion by Pat Scripture, second by Mark Bartusik. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Excuse me. Mayor, can I have you back up and take action on number one to accept the 2013 audit?
Didn't think we did that.
Oh.
If you wouldn't mind.
I guess we'll have to back up. I guess I'll make a motion to accept the 2013 audit.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Very well done.
Thanks for helping us, Mike, keeping us on track. Next, retro reflectivity. Is that like a made-up word, or what?
Oh, that's a real...
It's like supercalifragilisticexpialidocious.
Sounds like a state of Minnesota, my word.
The retro reflectivity rule or law has come a long ways in the last five years. It started out five years ago as being a lot more elaborate plan and kind of burden on the counties, cities, and state agencies. But they've downsized it to not the point that it's going to be a safety issue, or they're doing a lot less, but they've just made it a little more common sense. So we have to develop a policy that's going to basically spell out how we're going to keep track of our signs, how we're going to change them, what's the timeframe. And they gave us a number of different options. And the one that we decided with staff was to go with the expected sign life. And that, it spelled out in this ordinance, or this policy, but the expected sign life is going by the warranty of the material that we put on the sign, which is HIP, or High Intensity Prismatic sheeting, is what it's called. So, that's a 10-year warranty. But with the plan that we're going with, you can actually, at 10 years, you've got to look at the sign and then determine, does it need to be replaced today, or can I go another year? Can I go another two years? It's kind of a determination at that point. Seemed to make the most sense for us, cost-effective, and as far as managing how you're going to do this program compared to some of the other ways they had as far as options to do this.
How do you test to see if it's...
There is a retro reflectivity meter that you can buy. Can I have one?
I'm sure everyone does. They just probably don't know it is a retro reflectivity.
We should have a field trip when you do this, so we can watch you.
There you go.
Glenn, tell them what the cost of that meter is.
That meter is about $8,000 with about a $3,000 per year maintenance charge on it, because it's one of these machines that is really sensitive. So it just does not take a lot of banging around or bouncing around, and it's always out of calibration. And that was kind of five years ago, what they said you needed to do, and that's what everybody got alarmed about. And so I think they kind of moved this program into a more common sense way of doing things.
Okay.
So, yes, there is a meter out there.
Okay.
And that is still one of the options, if, you know, if we wanted to go that way. And I don't know of many cities, counties, or state agencies that are doing that, but they're out there.
No, I just was concerned of, you know, you may think it's fine, and all of a sudden you get the state government coming in, or the federal guy comes, no, that's not fine. And, you know, I didn't know if there was a standard or something that...
If you would pick that, that way of changing or running this policy, then there is a standard. Then there is...you've got to live up to so many...there's a chart saying that at this point, and I forget what the calibration is, but if it doesn't meet that, then the sign's got to go.
Okay.
Which then falls probably under the warranty under it. You know, if that's in six years, then you're going to go back to the company and ask for warranty on it. So, that's why we chose to go with the warranty. And not saying you won't monitor it, the police department helps us out quite a bit. If they're doing their rounds, driving around, just doing their job, and see something that doesn't look good, and that's because they're at night, and their lights shine on it, and it doesn't reflect back at them, they're letting us know.
Yeah.
And we've had some cases where we called the company, got warranty on it, or we realize it's out of warranty, so we just replace it.
So Glenn, if, say, it comes to the 10th year, and there's some that you, the police department, say, yeah, it reflects good, how do you know if it actually meets the retro reflectivity?
If you go with this way of monitoring those signs, then it is a judgment call. Then you are...then you're using your best judgment, your best ability to look at that sign and go, yep, that reflects back at me, or no, there's no possible way. You know, and, you know, they'll tell you to rule onto the side of safety, which is typically what we do with these signs anyway. If there's a question in our mind, it's, you know, probably okay, it's not okay. It's gone. Especially if it comes to a stop sign, you know, something that really kind of affects the flow of traffic or somebody's safety, no, we don't take the chance. We replace it.
I thought stop signs weren't part of this.
No, stop signs are.
Okay.
Yep, stop signs are a big part of this.
On page one of the policy, under Article 2.
The policy applies to all regulatory warning and guide signs. So regulatory warning and guide signs would be stop signs, yield signs, arrows giving you direction, no parking signs, things like that. It also includes the street signs, the street plates. It would not include, like, park signs. It does say parking standing.
That's what it says, what's stopping signs.
Stopping signs would be a sign that the...it's an R7 or R8 sign. Stopping sign would be a sign that you'll see once in a while, no stopping here, no parking here, things like that. That's what a stopping sign would be.
So, a lot of our cities are...or part of our streets are MINDOT, and maybe the county is...you don't have to think about those signs at all, right?
That's correct. Anything on highway...on Main Street or Highway 19, 13, and 19 would not be our jurisdiction, Connor, at 37. We do kind of help them out if there's an issue. We've been involved with the county and with the state. If the stop sign gets knocked down, we can respond a lot quicker than any one of those guys. We're putting up a stop sign for them. Not...probably not permanent, but temporary.
It will require additional data processing, some software that Glenn is looking at to develop a more detailed inventory system and record-keeping system that we haven't previously had to keep, or what we've had has been pen and pencil and a notebook. But we will obviously have to go to something more elaborate, because at the end of those warranty periods, and, you know, 10, 12, whatever number of years down the road after this is effective here, then we need to be able to be in a position as to how do we show we've been compliant with the policy, and how we've managed it and administered that. And so, yeah, well, we require some extra record-keeping and paperwork. But they're trying to set it up, or as we begin to do this, so that it can be built upon, and we can develop mapping off it. And it has the inspections and the record-keeping all in a GPS-based system, where we can locate where the signs are, and something much more extensive than we have right now.
It can't be implemented in our current mapping system with our water mains and that stuff, or is that eventually the long-term goal?
Uh, it would...that would be the long-term goal. This could not be incorporated in with what we have for the water mains and things like that, because that was all done by Simpa for us.
Okay.
Actually, this program is really user-friendly. Ken found it. He's been helping me with it. It's so user-friendly that anybody in any one of our departments could have a laptop, take it out in the truck, and it's all drop-down. You're not even filling in any information. They'll enter in all the information, being street names, things like that, what kind of sheeting. There was a lot of different fields, but it was all drop-down stuff. So it's a...it's drop and click. And then Ken can incorporate a lot of his mapping onto this system, because those signs would be then GPS, the location. And then he can also incorporate Boulevard Wits onto this mapping system off of his system, that, again, his system's great and elaborate. It takes Ken to run it. It's just one of those systems that you don't do once every three or four weeks and know how to do it. The system that we were looking at through a company called Simple Signs, that is one of those systems that you could do once a month, once every two months, and it'd be real easy to navigate through there. Not as elaborate as what Ken has currently. A lot of the things we do out there is...doesn't have to be that precise. We're looking for a rough estimate or measurement of Boulevard. That's where the post can go. That serves our purpose 70 percent of the time.
So does that software then kind of keep an audit trail, saying, okay...
It does keep an audit trail, yeah.
Here's when it was put in.
Yep.
Here's when it's replaced, or here's when it was tested, and here's when it...so that for, obviously, when you get audited, you know, by the system, or whoever audits this, I don't know who would fall under...
The biggest place that this is all going to come into play is if there's an actual serious accident out there, and then somebody's claiming that the city wasn't doing a good job. I was in the accident because the sign wasn't clearly visible. That's where all this is really going to have a huge place someday. Hopefully, it never has to play out that way, but that's where this is going to fall in to be kind of the savior.
So this is a federal...
Federal and state.
Federal and state, okay.
That's correct.
That's why you see the resolution set up the way it was, is to kind of keep track of where, how, or why this came into play, and how it's filtered down to us. And I know as I look at Councilmember Sean over here, that when we first brought this to the table three years ago now, that it was something much more elaborate than what Glenn has seen today. And so, it's better than what you first heard.
They had it down to, you'd literally have to have a city employee over the age of 62, that, moving at 30 miles an hour, needed to see that sign and be able to read it clearly from like 500 feet. That's initially what was drawn up.
And he needed one good eye.
And I took the class at the League of Minnesota Cities thing. And I'll never get those two hours back. But the potential was hundreds of thousands of dollars for cities. And that's why we were trying to lobby the state legislator. But of course, the federal government tied it to highway funds, which they need, and, you know, so...
You're right. It was a lot more elaborate.
But it was, if you didn't buy that $10,000 machine, you literally had to have a city employee over, I think, over the age of 62, in the front seat of the car, moving at 30 miles an hour, that was able to read it from X amount of depth feet. So...
So that class wasn't worthless. You look at what you retained.
Yeah, I'm surprised I can remember that. Well, not very good.
You should be presenting it. No, you're exactly right. And actually, that still is a way that you can do it, if you choose to do it that way.
Oh, they didn't take that.
They did not take it away. So that was still one of the options, but...
Amazing.
Yeah.
It won't hurt us that much.
I think they just made it a little more common sense, is what they did, which is good for all of us. It's good for county and state. It's good for everybody. So...
So while we're cognizant of trying to get in this as low dollar cost as we can, we know we need to do it right, because at some point down the road, we're going to have to have the proof of the data to defend something. And we don't want to get into this and not put the city in a position, because at some point, if there's a lawsuit, and we have to produce these kind of records, then we need to have a good trail of what's been done.
The computer program that Mike started talking about, and we haven't made a decision on it, but I think there's other programs out there, and we're going to do a little bit of looking at. But this program, as you asked, will allow us to, if you go and do an inspection on that, you can enter that information, and what you found, if it, you know, looked in pretty good shape at that point, or no, it's terrible, we've got to replace it, things like that. And then, in five years, eight years, 10 years from now, we can ask this program to give me all the 30-inch stop signs that were installed in 2014. And it will give me those addresses, all the GPS coordinates, if you wanted it that way, and where they're at. How many did you do? So you can use it for budgeting. You know, that way, you know you're going to need enough money to replace 26 stop signs. So, but right now, what we've seen that really looks real user-friendly.
So, obviously, we have a bunch of stop signs out there now. I mean, is...how do you start with this?
This program or this policy becomes effective June 13. And if you only...if you wanted to live by what this says, you don't have to enter in anything you've ever installed before. It's starting from June 13 going forward. We do have quite a bit of information. Either Ken's got it, and then I got some of it just on paper, that we can incorporate some of these signs in. And again, not to do anything more than just protect the city in saying, you know, we do...we've looked at these signs. We know the ones that were put in in 2005 are still in good shape, you know, things like that. It's all that's...we feel it's going to do for us. So, we do have most of that information, and we should be able to incorporate it into this. And whatever information we don't have as far as documentation, we'll actually have to go and look at that sign.
Mm-hmm.
And make a determination at that point.
Kind of start a database going forward.
Exactly. They go and build on it.
Yep, okay.
And we have to complete it by 2016.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Glenn, on your policy, under Article 7, the last sentence, or 6, I'm sorry, last sentence, "The sign's older than the expected life will be replaced." Are you sure you want that in there? Because you just says, we'll look at them. If we don't have to replace them, we won't? Because there's nothing mandatory that says you have to replace that when it's 10 years old.
It's...the expected life would be any documentation that we can prove that that sign can go for 12 years. Manufacturer tells us it can go for 10. We'll warrant it for 10 years, is what the manufacturer's telling us. We can, through this program, we can, as a city, say, but for the last eight years of doing this program, we've found that all of our HIP sheeting has gone a minimum of 12 years or 13 years. So that's what we're saying, signs older than that. And we have to come up with that. We don't have that today. That would be an ongoing deal. So that's what that statement would mean, is signs older than the expected life. We have to come up with the expected life yet to be determined. We're saying at this point, we're going to go by warranty. We're hopefully going to, in the years to come, get documentation to prove that we can do two years more than warranty. That answer your question?
Well, you know what I'm saying is, the sentence is, they will be replaced. What you're telling me is that, no, we don't have to do that. And I don't know who this goes to, but I guess depending upon who it goes to, and if something happens, and that sign's over 10 years old...
Glenn, was this the language out of the policy that came down?
From the league.
I think what he's asking is maybe there's some wiggle room we want to see. Maybe we can talk to the city attorney real quick and just ask him whether there's anything we can add on to the end that does what you're saying, but David's reading it more literally, and maybe we can get some wiggle room out of that.
Yep. No, I understand. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we can look into that, most definitely.
And Article 7, that last sentence there, it kind of piggybacks onto what I just talked about. It gives three different reasons for replacing the sign. You might want to have a look at that, too.
Which one, David?
It's the Article 7, the very last sentence.
On page three.
Second last sentence, on page three.
Damage stolen or missing signs may be replaced as needed.
No, go back up. I'm sorry, the sentence before that. It's actually a long sentence. There it says, "By replacing signs as they reach the end of their ladder of their A, warranty period, B, expected life expectancy, or C..." My thought there was, they're kind of saying the same thing that I directed on Article 6.
Well, there it is, expected life is determined.
You may want to look at that sentence also. You may want to look at that sentence also.
Do you want those?
I just have one thing.
What was that?
I have one thing.
Okay.
I just kind of was wondering, on like Article eight, it says the Director of Public Works, but then I noticed it says Public Works Manager. I don't know if that's huge, but it is. It's like not the, that's your title, like Public Works Manager? Or is it, are you Director of Public Works? You have two titles.
Well, we're hoping to get that changed when we finish the process here, that...
Oh.
Either one. We'd probably go with the Director of Public Works. It's, that's where I think in the end, that's what we'll change it to.
Okay. Should we maybe table this?
Well, if you're willing, if you'll approve it, subject to the review of those two elements by the city attorney, with whatever changes he recommends.
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to come back to it.
No, that's fine with me.
So move.
Motion by Mark Bartuszczyk and second by Pat Scripture to adopt the sign retroflectivity policy with the review by the city attorney on those two points. There's no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I suppose you got the next one, too.
I do. Parks Department had budgeted for utility vehicle for the parks to replace the two thousand and one John Deere six-by-four Gator. As you can see, we got a couple of different quotes. The Toros come in cheaper. This piece of equipment just takes care of all the things in the park, dragging the fields, hauling garbage, hauling things in or out of the park area that pickups can't get to, things like that. It's used quite a bit. It's also used at times for watering the flowers on Main Street, so it's a pretty versatile vehicle. The Gator's done a pretty good job for us, but as you can see, is, we try to roll these pieces of equipment every ten years, and we got a few extra years out of this one, so it's time for it to move on. So the recommendation of staff is that the council authorized purchases of Toro Workman from MTI Distributing for twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-four. And then we got to give Department of Revenue two hundred dollars and fifty cents for tax on this, so.
Any questions?
This, something that, you know, the government website for bids, this wasn't on there at all?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You know, there's that governmental website where you can look at, things are all bid out already.
Oh, State Bid?
State Bid.
Yes, yes. This is...
That's from here?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. This is actually called a federal bidding. It works the same as the state, and the reason being because this is considered golf course equipment, and the state contract doesn't carry golf course equipment. So it's the same principle. It's, works the same way. You look it up the same way, so same process. But because it's classified as golf course equipment, it's not called state contract.
Thank you.
And there's no other need for the Gator?
No. The Gator's just seen its wear and tear. It's just time for it to go down the road.
No, I was just thinking, I mean, it's not something the golf course could use that you're...
No. There's some, there's some work to be done to it, and it's just at that age it needs to go.
Okay.
We talked about it for the baseball field, actually, and I don't, it just wouldn't be a good fit. We could end up spending a lot of money on it. It's not worth it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dave Bruszek.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartuszczyk. There's no further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Passes five-zero.
Thank you.
One of these days, I'm going to screw up.
It's coming.
You've done pretty well.
I know. Ever since you moved here, I've been focusing. Okay, who's doing the golf equipment?
I don't see anybody here from the golf course. Jeff was out of town. I sent it to Wade. Apparently, he must not be available, so I'll do the best I can. I told him if there was any questions, that we'd have to table if I couldn't answer it, so.
Do we need to approve this?
The Golf Board is kind of recommending. They reviewed this following your meeting. It's budgeted. Historically, they've come back because it's been involving with the bonding.
Okay. I knew that we approved up to fifty thousand.
And so, you know, if we want to change that process, we can certainly do that. They just have historically been coming this way because of the tightness in the golf budgets in recent years, and the council's just approved all of these items coming out of there.
I was just going to say at the, we did discuss it at the Golf Board meeting last week, and Superintendent Pint was there. I reiterated the fact that, you know, council gave this money, and we just wanted you to prioritize that equipment to make sure that, there was some questions on whether or not this was the best value for our dollar. He came back and explained each and every one of these to the satisfaction of the Golf Board, and he understands that based on our, really our equipment needs over the next ten years, that that, some of those years, he might not get all the money that he actually wants, and he needs to prioritize effectively. So he did justify all this, and the Golf Board did approve it, believe unanimously, but I don't have the copy of the minutes with me, but it did pass. So the dollar amount had already been approved by the council, so we did review it.
This is thirty-one thousand of the fifty, roughly.
Yeah, this is only three of the six items that were before you. They're still taking a look at how they're going to resolve the other three, but these three were ready to go. Were able to get the quotations on all of them. I tried to give you the amount that was presented to you when it came before you on April seventh, and then what the recommended dollar amounts are, and collectively, this, the estimates would have totaled about thirty-two, and this is coming in at about twenty-eight-four. So about thirty-six hundred dollars under the estimate for those three pieces.
I move we approve. Second.
You got a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, is this, this isn't everything, then? They're going to have more to get up to the fifty?
Yeah, what you had left is that you had the cart was one. We had the...
Yeah, I can't remember. I know we did that.
It doesn't matter, but...
Plug picker, wasn't it some elevator?
Oh, the core.
Yeah, it was a plug picker. You're right.
Core picker, and then the other one was a valve. I think it was a valve that they're looking at in there. So these are no, only three of the six. The other ones would still come back.
Then the other question, they didn't include sales tax, and I know golf courses are not exempt from sales tax.
The prices do include sales tax.
They do? They're in there?
Yes, because I personally, I personally made sure that those calculations were done.
Didn't specifically say that, but...
Any other comments? I know we have a motion...
I missed it in my memo. Sorry.
I got a motion by Mark Bartuszczyk, second by Sean Ryan, to approve these piece, three pieces of equipment now, and then probably coming back at a later date for the remaining, for the bonding issues, so. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay. Passes four-one. Mike, are you taking the personnel policy?
Uh, yes, I will.
Personnel policy, not a personal policy, but a personnel. I can't wait till Mark has to read his letter of resignation. He's drinking the water already. Don't drink the Kool-Aid.
If you recall, I think it was back now in March, I talked about the potential process that we could take a look at for filling vacancies, and council elected to not institute or undertake that process that would go out and take us through probably a full-blown hiring process, but to take a look at more internally through the promotion and transfer. So as we had that discussion, we went back and have tried to take a look at the, the language contained in that promotion transfer process, and after examining that, where the city attorney tried to, to clean up and modify it slightly. There's not a significant change in the intent, but more of a general house cleaning and clarity more than anything. The timing of the posting was originally five working days. This is seven calendar days, so in the same sense, it ends up being, being the same. There was a question on the interpretation that, that we post for five working days in all departments. Then the next language on the old policy was, is all position openings will also be advertised in the local newspaper. Well, that kind of runs contrary, that if you're going to post an internal and try to fill it that way, that you do it that way. If you find going through that process it doesn't work, then you can go out and advertise, just like you would externally, for, for anything else. Promotions and transfers are subject to the probationary period. That stayed the same. Unsuitable, they may return to a position in their former class and rate of pay if such a position's available. May be required to pass a physical that will be paid for by the city if the new position's physical requirements differ from those of the previous position. I did recommend, as part of the new policy, is that we take that out. New positions, physical requirements, if they differ, that in some cases, although the position health requirements may not be any different, the health of the condition of the individual that applying might be different. So I didn't recommend including that. So with the city attorney's help, we made a modification to develop this internally that I think clarifies, at least the action and the direction I heard from you, is that we try to fill vacancies by promotion or transfer whenever practical. And when it does, we try to follow this process. If going through that, we deem that we don't have anybody internal, then that certainly doesn't preclude us from opening up and advertising this in an open competitive basis. So it's more an attempt to kind of clean up and improve what was there and clarify it.
So this will replace the existing policy?
Correct.
Any questions?
Yeah, I noticed that one of the things that wasn't in here was on page twenty-seven in the handbook. It's promotion, reclassification, and demotion for, and it kind of has to do with the pay, like how we handle it in different, in the different scenarios. And I just, on here, I don't see anything for an employee unless that's what a transfer is, but it doesn't carry over from this wording that we just got into the promotion, because it's promotions, transfers, you know? Is that, would that be a transfer if somebody, like, they were in a pay scale range already, and then they took another job? Do they stay frozen or what? There's, it doesn't address that. Do you know what I'm saying?
No, that a promotion would assume somebody is going from one pay grade or classification to a higher level category.
Okay, or a transfer, same thing?
No.
What's a transfer?
A transfer would be a movement within a pay grade or a classification from one department to another that may still be in the same pay grade.
Right. That's the one that it doesn't really address in here, in that, that I wish there was something in there. You probably don't have it, but sometime I just...
Well, no, I don't have it in front of me, but that would be the expected range, that if you're going to transfer an employee and, it could be as we dealt with before, that it depends on, we have a number of different positions that are all in the same pay grade. And if you transfer from one pay grade that's in the same classification as another, then you're doing a lateral transfer within the same pay range.
Right.
If you're going to...
We had one like that where we told the person they'd have to take a pay cut recently. And it doesn't address it in here.
No. What we, what we did in that respect is we advertised the position. We have a pay grade here, but we chose to reduce the advertising. We didn't use the full spectrum of the pay grade. The intent and the recommendation from the Golf Board was to try to reduce our costs from a payroll standpoint, so we chose to hire at a lower, at the lower end of the level in that pay grade. We didn't open it all the way up. And so in that case, it would have, in order to transfer or to move from one department in the same pay grade to another department, that position would have to have taken a pay cut because that was the intent in trying to reduce the personnel cost in that area.
Then maybe there should be some wording to that effect on this page twenty-seven, because it just doesn't, it isn't in here at all. It doesn't say that we can do that, and it doesn't say what to do in that case, but... Yeah, I'll just talk to you another time about it, because it is sort of, it's sort of with this subject, but it not...
Well, but in most cases, a transfer is that you either transfer within a department to another department, and if it was other than the current same pay grade, it would be a promotion to another department. Because you're not going to transfer up and not have that be a promotion, because it's going to come with an increased pay grade.
I know. I'm just trying to see where it addresses that one case that we had earlier.
Well, in that case, it was a specific desire on the Golf Board and our intent to advertise that at the lower end of the pay scale.
Does it say that in here?
No, it doesn't have to say that.
Doesn't have to, Pat. It doesn't have to. A transfer is the same pay grade. What you're talking about was not. So that doesn't have to be in there.
It addressed that at all.
We don't have to.
I don't want to lose that flexibility anyways. I mean, that's a good example.
Saying they have the flexibility in here somewhere.
Well, I don't think it deals with this. Let's approve this and talk about that some other time.
If you put that in there, now we're going to be pigeonholed into having people laterally move.
Trying to protect the city, that's all.
There was nothing...
In one way, I'm all for promoting within. This wasn't a promotion. I mean, it could have been argued that people were... That that individual was actually taking a step back, because it was very entry level, below what, what...
If we had found that in trying to advertise on the lower end of the spectrum in that pay grade for that kind of position, then in going out to recruit for that position, that we couldn't have filled it, then we probably would have had to expanded the pay grade for consideration in that process.
I move we approve this policy change.
Hold it here. Just relax. Go ahead.
I made a motion.
And I'm not accepting it right now, so just relax.
Somebody seconds it. It's, it is accepted.
If I don't recognize you, I'm the one running the meeting. If I don't recognize you to speak...
We don't need to discuss this right now, Chuck, because it's not, it's not pertinent. It's a sideline.
Mike, go ahead. Continue with your...
In the process, that the pay range is the range of pay and the different grades that we provide for that. Based on the experience, the knowledge, the education in that process, typically, we would start most people at close or near the entry levels of most pay grades. If we find in the recruitment process we're unable to do that, as you saw when we brought in, I think, the Assistant Wastewater Superintendent in both times, both Doug Larson and Scott Warner, is that to recruit for that position, we couldn't start at the bottom level of the position just because the field that we were competing with and trying to draw applicants from required us to pay at a higher rate. So we started them probably more in the middle of the pay scale. More unusual than the most cases, but we've had to do that. We could have to do that potentially, maybe not, depending on the applicants in a police officer position. It depends on the kind of position, the time you go recruiting, who your recruitment basis is. And if we get somebody in that has significantly more experience than an entry-level position, we may have to pay some more in that regard. In this case, we felt that two things they were wanting to do was to try to reduce personnel and labor costs within that department, and so the board asked me, and we tried to advertise that position at a lower rate. It didn't preclude people from applying for that, but we actually were looking at hiring on the lower end of that wage range. So if that individual that applied for that, he knew that when he applied for that position, that he would have to potentially take a pay cut in that area. If we couldn't have filled that position, and he'd have been the person we'd have selected, then we'd have transferred him at the same rate into that other department at the rate that he was currently in effect making.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is that I wish it was worded in there so that it's clear to people that that's, this is something that can happen.
But that's going to come up not on a basis other than what you deal with, with what your goal is going into the process, and whether you have the flexibility to make decisions within that realm. We're paying within the pay range there. We just happen to be wanting to pay at the lower end of that pay scale versus that individual was at top pay grade eight.
Right.
And if he had been the applicant that we would have selected for that, yes, then I'd have recommended we transfer him to the golf course at that pay grade at the same rate.
Chuck, are we talking about this information or previous meetings? Let's address this agenda item, please.
It's related to it.
No, it's not.
But I just... No, no, I'm just, Pat, you know, that's fine. You know, I, I just think you can't, in a policy, something like this, it's hard to have every, I guess, example defined, because if you're going to do that, then you'd have to have, you know...
Well, there's just, there's every other one in there.
Well, no, I think it just, I think it just basically talks about the two things, a promotion and a transfer, and I think...
Reclassification.
You know, and I think that's kind of, you know, and to me, I think Scott, Noah and Scott, I'm sure he reviewed it, looked at the existing one. And to both Mark and Sean's position is, you've got to have that flexibility available or else.
It's in here.
What's that?
I just think there's so much here, there's a whole page.
Of what?
Of talking about how the pay is going to be dealt with. When we do a promotion, reclassification, demotion, it's all there except it doesn't really talk about that person that's on a pay and they're going to be in the same pay grade.
Right, that's the handbook you're talking about.
Yeah.
But that would be, that would be common sense. That if you're going to laterally transfer somebody to a similar position in a similar pay grade, it would be within the pay classification for that pay grade. If you're going to move him or her up to another pay grade, that's a promotion.
Right.
Yeah, I guess we're just kind of.
Talking about that one area, but that's okay.
We're trying to just.
Never mind.
I think we're just trying to simplify it so that.
I just don't agree, I just think differently here, that's okay.
Right. Well, I mean, you maybe think differently because you were in, you know, in that arena, you know, where most of us haven't been in that arena. Any other comments? Okay, Mark, you can make your motion now.
I'll second.
I move we approve.
Okay, I got a second by Sean Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay. Now, the reason why we came tonight. Most of us were going to probably skip the meeting and go golfing, but this is the real reason why we came. I think it's your show, Mark.
You're looking, you're looking that much forward to it?
Actually, I think it's Mike's show.
All right, I'll take it that he's a little reluctant, that the end is getting close at hand, but we reluctantly provide to you tonight a letter that I received from Police Chief Oseepka last Thursday identifying his proposed retirement date upon conclusion of work on August 31st of 2014. Mark's been the chief with the city since January 15 of '04, an employee with the department since January 1 of 1985, and at the time of his retirement, well, been with the city for 29-plus years. Our recommendation tonight is to accept the letter of resignation with regret with an effective date of August 31st, 2014.
Any questions for Mark? I think Dave's got a sheet about two pages long, so.
Yeah, I think this deserves some serious consideration. And I think that we should not accept the letter of resignation for a few reasons. If we accepted it, by not accepting, one, we would save the pension fund money that would help increase the fund for future retirees. Two, city, save city staff, therefore Mike, time and money in finding a new chief, promoting a sergeant, and hiring another patrol officer. Thereby help clear off Mike's desk. Good reason for not accepting it. Three, this could ultimately saves Mark's marriage. Because it is a published fact that many marriages fail because the husband spends too much time around the house creating problems for the wife. So we're saving poor Lori here. Four, prevent deterioration of his health. His current position helps him keep physically active, well, somewhat active. Instead of lounging, can't read my own writing, I'm sorry, putzing around the house, further aggravating Lori, and bugging his neighbors while imbibing on too much beer, which often only serves to ruin his currently fine physique. And five, the mayor would have to find somebody else to chastise. This would be a tragedy for the rest of the council and the attending staff and Patrick also. Because Mark's presence at these meetings, when he decides to attend, adds to the morale of the council. Maybe somebody else, I had another good question, but good reason, but I couldn't, can't remember what it was, so I didn't write it down. Unless somebody else has some reasons why we should not accept your resignation, Mark.
Thank you.
What's he going to do on the first and third Monday?
Well, that's another thing, I don't know.
Oh, wait, he's not here most of the time anyway, so.
That's true.
Didn't we just make a nameplate for you too?
Yeah.
That's my old one, I believe. Could I respectively ask for a four-month leave of absence with pay? Then Dave wouldn't have to worry about all this stuff.
Why four months?
Well, till August, end of August.
No, we can't do that either.
Very good, very good, David. Any questions for Mike or for Mark? I know it's not an easy decision for us to make, and we might have to go and close doors for it, but.
It wasn't easy for myself either.
No.
Like I said before, and I've told Mike numerous times, when I got into this almost 30 years ago, I made a decision 30 was going to be it, and wherever that happened to be, that's where it was going to happen to be. And it just went a little, a couple of months earlier than I anticipated with some changes, but time to move on and let somebody else take, take charge and improve the police department more than it has been.
Dennis, Dennis did this to me, you're doing it to me? I'm going to, you know, my epitaph's going to have, you know, I let all the good employees leave while I was mayor. Don't think about me at all, Mark, okay?
You could look at the common denominator, I guess.
This is true, it's an election year. I can make a big decision there. I don't have to get a letter of resignation. Any other comments? You know, I know we joke a lot about it, Mark, but you definitely are a value to the city, an asset to this community for the work you've done in the past and continue to work and, you know, maybe we figure if we keep joking with you, you might stick around, but obviously you've made up the mind, your mind. I know the few years that I got to know you in our capacities has been very enjoyable for me. You have my greatest respect. And I guess I'll make a motion to accept this letter of resignation.
And my feeling's the same, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Dave Bruchek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Well, it's official now.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mark, we appreciate it.
He was actually worried you might accept it sooner than August 31st.
No, no, we got a few more months, we got to deal with them. We're going to get our, definitely our, our money's worth out of the next few meetings. Okay, along with accepting that resignation, we.
We don't have to go through this either. We've got to skip this one if you wouldn't have resigned. Pardon me, Dave? We wouldn't have to do this step if you wouldn't resign.
You'd have to do it eventually.
That's right. And I think we kind of talked about this at the meetings with the boards and commissions. I kind of gave you this outline, and the reason why we need to kind of get this approved and moving forward is because of the tight timeline that we want to get everything done and so that we can accomplish. Mark's leaving at August 31st and getting the new chief in place and a new sergeant and a new patrol person, so.
Yeah, basically what you see in front of you is a condensed version, trying to identify the tentative outline that Mark and I have kind of tried to walk through as we look at the internal posting, assuming everything works there and we get the candidate applying that we think. If everything comes in timely, I'd like to schedule the interview with the council and the applicant for Thursday, May 15th, with Action being back on your May 19th agenda with an appointment with an effective starting date of September 1. I propose, just because the process is closely related, and what we think might happen is we also post at the same time the sergeant's position. Maybe a bit of an assumption on our part, but a good likelihood and possibility that this could occur as well, so we post them simultaneously, but follow up with actions at the following meeting in, on June 2nd. And then towards the latter part of the month, assuming the first two play out, then we would advertise outwardly for police officer positions with interviews and July action and by the council with an August 18th start date tentatively at this point. So that kind of maps out the road, the roadmap, so to speak.
The only flaw I see in it is that May 15th, this is Thursday, you know, but.
Well, the alternative is that we, we back it up and.
No, I'm just kidding.
We can accommodate if we had to, that certainly can be done.
Oh, I'll only play nine holes that day. I'll get my nine in.
There's something else on that, David.
And I guess I don't know if that even works for everybody, but I guess I shouldn't presume that.
Well, we can let you know if it does for one of us.
I would, I would need to know that, I can move that back later in the evening as to what might work best for you, but I guess that was one of the things I needed to set with you is that what time might work for you?
I'm flexible.
Do a later one at 6:30, 7 o'clock, or earlier, or preference?
I don't know, it's just, May 15th stuck in my head for whatever reason, but I don't know. So no, just go ahead and plan it, I'll let you know.
Taxes, you have to pay your property taxes.
Well, that's.
Not it?
Do you have a certain time you'd like to do it? Do you want to push it back to 7? You want a 5:30, 6 o'clock start, your preference, what works with everybody's schedule?
For me?
That 5:30 works for me or 7 works for me, it doesn't matter, I'll be there.
I'd like to do it a little later. Not 5:30, but.
7 o'clock?
30, 7 would be great, but.
7? Is that okay with everyone? Move that to 7?
I just have to be able to get out a three-day notice on posting of the meeting. So we can schedule for 7.
6:30 better for you, Pat?
I can do 6:30, that's fine.
6:30?
Okay.
Okay. Do you want all the grief you've caused, Mark, already?
Yeah, we can avoid all of this, Mark.
Okay. Do we need this approved, Mike, or?
If you would for me.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion, approve the timeline that's presented with the interview at 6:30 on May 15th.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes. Consent agenda. Any items or questions or issues on the consent agenda?
I had one on the, the board and commission meeting, that special city council meeting on Monday, 28th, the meetings, or the minutes. I actually arrived at 5:15, I missed that first.
Okay.
Interview, it has me down here at, being there at 5, but, small, but not quite accurate.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change that Councilperson Ryan arrived at 5:15 for the board and commission meeting.
Second.
Got a second by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Moving right along, miscellaneous. Ken, you've been awful quiet today.
Oh, I can give you a quick update on the pool, US Aquatics. We had them in on Thursday, the 24th, so a couple of days after you guys approved their contract, they looked over the pool on a wonderful rainy Thursday. And we've got a list, we just got very late in the day of things we need to take care of to open up the pool yet this year. So we've got roughly, what, a month, Glenn, to.
Yep.
Get those items done. Other than that, we're going to get, hopefully by the next council meeting, some preliminary questions that you guys can take a look at for the community survey and possibly also the full report of the condition of the pool as well, so.
The stuff, the stuff that you have to get ready is, is that just normal stuff? Or is this stuff that they're requesting?
Both, normal stuff and stuff they're requesting.
Okay.
There's a couple of changes in, in the rules that we have to add some extra screens on some of the reclaim lines on the pool, things like that, so. Yeah, everything that would be normally get ready, clean the pool, paint things, get chemicals up and running, and then some of the changes that they've come up with.
Yeah.
So, going to be a busy month. There too, we hope Mother Nature cooperates.
And you said you ordered the L.
What's that?
You ordered the L?
Yeah. It's coming.
Anything else, Ken?
Uh, no, nothing more.
Okay. Glenn?
INS was supposed to be here to survey and do the work on the baseball field today, and because of the rain last week that screwed their schedule up, so we're still waiting for them to come out. And they're being very generous. They are going to survey everything, give us GPS points on tower posts, corners of buildings, they're going to, GPS Lexington Avenue North and some of the parking lot, and we should have a great survey out of what they're going to do for us. So we're still going forward with all that, it's just, again, Mother Nature has such a play in it that it's not coming together as quick as we probably like it to, so. Charter exonerating started on 3rd Street if, unless you came in from the north, you noticed that it all tore up already, so they got two, three blocks milled already, started on a little bit of water and sewer on the intersection of 2nd Avenue and 3rd Street. Tomorrow they should be working on water and sewer right here south of the school and continue on down the road, so. Again, hopefully the weather holds up for that, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Mark? Yeah, you going up, opening fishing? No? Okay.
I still have.
Patrick, you got anything? Mary Jo? Mike?
One item in the back of your packet, probably wasn't the most interesting thing to read, but I have word from one of the cable TV attorneys that I've worked for in the past gave me a heads up in regards to, I don't know if you saw the announcement in the newspaper, I included part of an article, that Comcast is going to be spinning off part of their Minnesota market as part of a merger. That could very likely impact us, and so I'm going to have to probably get the cable TV process started here, at least with figuring out who we want to use or engage as a consultant. Either, I've worked with this gentleman for 14, 15 years, Scott has an attorney in his firm that does cable work. This process is one that will require us to, as a council and a city, to take actions in here if they want to have us proffer a transfer application, as you see in here. Typically, they historically will pay the cost of those legal fees that are associated with the transfer, because there's certain procedural things that we as a community are required to look at in that transfer application process. But if you read the memo that he provided, they're looking at spinning this off into a cable company that doesn't exist as of yet. And so there's some concerns in transferring a spinoff entity that exists and has a background into a joint venture entity from a number of cable companies that doesn't have a track record, financial history, or any of those kinds of things. So it'll probably be necessary that we retain legal counsel to assist us in this cable arena because it's such a very specialized area. But in most cases, as I've said in the past historically, the cable company will pay the city for any of the legal fees that we incur in as part of the process. It also will be the start of the, as we take a look at this, we're not far from probably having to start the process. This will obviously produce some interesting dynamics in it as we begin the process to take a look at reshaping or looking at where we want to go with our cable franchise long term, that the two of them expire next year, I think it's either March, April, or April, May. And ideally, historically, if we can get one done with the other, we use that as a benchmark with the other one, and so in this case, we'll have to take a look at that in light of where they're going through this transition that may dictate where we want to start in that process and who we want to get it done with, and then use that as the benchmark with whoever the entity is that comes out of this process. So it, you know, we don't go looking for things to do, they just happen to find us, and this is one that may be coming our way whether we want it to or not.
Okay.
Is there an option, Mike, that when this, for us, that we could find some other cable company to give the business to?
Typically, isn't likely that, we're fortunate that we have two providers here to begin with, that you just go up the road. Many cities only have one provider. We happen to have multiple in the last community I worked for, but, you know, we're blessed if you have. have more than one choice in, in that arena. And it isn't that you really get to go out and pick somebody and say, come on in, because they have to make that capital investment of all of the, the lines and, you know, the connections and all those kinds of things. And, you know, being a city of about 7,500 population with the local phone company here who expanded into, from telephone into, and originally had cable TV, but into the internet, and now that we have Comcast with TV and internet, to expect that some other third party is coming our way is probably not likely. They'll spin this off to this entity or whoever else is going to be the end product in the process. And all we can do is to ensure that, I don't know that he spells it out in here, but typically it's the, the financial, the technological, and there's one other thing that we have an obligation to take a look at on behalf of our consumers to determine whether they meet the capabilities of being able to provide that service or not. And if they can, then it's very difficult to not award the franchise in the transfer process. But that's an arena all unto itself, and I'm not a cable TV attorney, so I can't guide you there. And so we'll have to take a look at that. And maybe what might help is that if I get a council committee that maybe wants to sit in and we can take a look at interviewing a couple of different firms to take a look at where we want to go with this, or we can make the choice to go with the attorney in Scott's firm. We, we've got some choices there.
Okay.
All I want to do is give you a heads up is that it's another thing we're going to have to add to the list that we don't have any choice on.
Anything else? Anything on the, the comp plan? Yeah, Mike and I, your, the comp plan, you got...
Comp plan is coming along. I've just finished up the last pieces. Glenn, about a week ago, maybe a week and a half ago now, gave me all the wastewater. And the last pieces on some education training should be done, and that'll be going in this week.
Okay.
Finally. It's been a slow process on my part.
Anything else? Anyone? Pat?
I have one here. Excuse me. Did you hear anything back yet on the armory?
No. I put a phone call in last week and have not heard back from the congressman's office, staff out of Mankato.
How about Cedar Lake area?
Nothing new on that one either. That's all I have.
Okay. Sean?
Nope.
Mark?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't either. Anyone? Nothing else? I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Thank you, everyone.